Call this Altoona City Council meeting to order Monday, May 12th at 6:00 PM. We will now have a moment of silent prayer. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, would you take the rule call, please?
Councilman Beatty.
Here.
Councilman Butterbaugh.
Here.
Councilwoman Clinage.
Here.
Vice Mayor Ellis.
Here.
Councilman Ickes.
Here.
Councilman Kelly.
Here.
Mayor Pacifico.
Here.
We had an executive session after last month's meeting to discuss personnel, real estate, and potential litigation. We'll now open the floor for public comment. If anybody would like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address, and please keep your comments to under five minutes. Floor is now open.
You're welcome.
Evening. My name's Gary Eichelberger. I live at 2111 11th Street, and I'd like for the council and the city to consider a ban on recreational fires in the city. I know there's permits required for regular burning, but recreational fires, it just seems to like, well, in my case, I live in a two-and-a-half-story house, and I don't have air conditioning. I don't want air conditioning, and I open the windows, and I enjoy the breeze comes off of the buckhorn, but that enjoyment is completely curtailed sitting in my house. Whenever someone wants to put up a fire in their neighborhood, it's probably a block away, could be two, just might be where I'm situated. I don't know if that's particularly the reason why, but whenever a fire starts, it hogs up the whole neighborhood, and I start to scratch, get irritated, and it's not very enjoyable. And as far as attracting people to move into the city, and in consideration of we've just had a recent, we're having a tax increase, just to improve the living conditions and viability of the city, I would think it would be well-considered to impose a recreational fire ban. I don't see much use in recreational fires in the city. Like, when I was growing up, we used to burn brush out in Lisbon, but that's many moons ago. And, but I think it would be a good idea, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Lawrence Carter, 1105 Broadway, Altoona. Topic I want to address is a shade tree commission. There are two times to plant trade trees, yesterday, 20 years ago, and yesterday. In the early 1900s, Altoona, a drab industrial city, started improving its infrastructure. Wooden sidewalks were replaced with brick and concrete, brick and concrete curbs were installed, and the residents planted maple tree seedlings donated by Gable's Department Store. This was part of an ongoing city beautification program. Altoona won awards for being a shade tree city. Plaque were displayed in City Hall, they may still be there. Over the years, we learned that maple trees are not good city trees. They get large, buckle and heave sidewalks, and interfere with power lines. Arborists today promote several species of trees designed specifically for cities. They grow to a moderate height, have less leaves, don't eat sidewalks, nor interfere with power lines. Mixing the species of trees provides a continuous landscape and protects that landscape if one of the species should become diseased or die. Apparently Altoona removes, currently Altoona removes dying or dangerous trees, but has no replanning program. If this policy continues, the long-term results are obvious. I propose that the city reestablish and appoint a volunteer shade tree commission that seeks public input for an annual program and recommends potential projects. Penn State can assist in the commission with complex projects and planting the correct tree species. The commission can also recommend tree removal. Citizens and business contributions should be solicited with public recognition for their efforts. The commission shall coordinate with all city departments in its planning, execution efforts, and prepare an annual party, an annual report for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no more public comment. We will close the floor and move on. Next, we have a presentation on electrical plumbing licensing. Tony Luther is here. Tony?
Good evening, members of the Altoona City Council. My name is Tony Luther. I have requested your time this evening to discuss the long overdue removal of requirements under Chapter 314, Master Electricians, and Chapter 542, Master Plumbers of the Altoona City Ordinance. I, along with my wife Doreen, our two children, and a team of hard-working crew members who live, work, and support our local communities, have been dedicating blood, sweat, tears, and a lot of hard-earned money into making safe and affordable living for our tenants, so our tenants are proud to call their home. For many years, we purposely avoided purchasing within the city because of the added, and in my opinion, unnecessary regulations assessed on top of the Uniform Construction Code. It is my understanding that city council has a strong desire to rebuild the city and eliminate the ever-growing issue of rundown, dilapidated, and in its most simple definition, eyesores, that are scattered throughout city limits. While there has been some momentum in certain areas of the city, there are many areas that continue to slide in the wrong direction. My wife and I recently signed a sales agreement and are slated to close on a property that is located in the area of 4th Avenue and 7th Street next week. This is a large brick building that houses six units with a separate building that is two units. It caught fire in 2021 and has sat vacant, collecting a slew of violations along the way. This building has beautiful views overlooking the city. It's on a cornerstone of a main artery to the hospital in the downtown area, yet here it sits, rotting away to nothing. So ask yourself, how do we, as city council, attract enthusiastic individuals who share the same passion for growth and sustainability as you? I can almost guarantee, not one of the thoughts going through your head right now is, "We need more guidelines, we need more regulations, and most importantly, we need ways to make projects inefficient and cost prohibitive." It has been said at past meetings, when this topic is brought up, removing these requirements under Chapter 314 and Chapter 524 will allow shoddy work and unsafe conditions for the residents. If someone is going to do unsafe work or cut corners, the last thing they are going to do is show up at City Hall and ask for a permit application. They are just going to do the work as they please, whether it is safe or not. You, as a city, have zero control from that happening. What you do have control over is making it more cost-effective, more cost, more efficient, and inviting individuals like myself and many of my friends in the housing industry. This is how you will meet your goal to reduce the blight and have an energetic movement in the revitalization of housing in the city of Altoona. The Uniform Construction Code, known as the UCC, was enacted in April of 2004. It looks like the city's requirements of master plumbers and master electricians was adopted in 1996. So maybe there was a, there was a need for it at that time. Now, all parties, assuming proper permits and inspections are complete, completed, have to meet the UCC requirements for each application. This is why I feel confident that there is no better time than now to rid yourself of this dated city ordinance. This is simply a ball and chain that is holding the city back from reaching its goal. My wife and I are planning a three-quarter of a million-dollar investment into this property located in the heart of residential living within city limits. With the current requirements in the two fields that we spoke about earlier, this equates to a $75,000 overage in expenses compared to using our preferred contractors to perform the work. That's 10% of the overall project wasted due to unnecessary regulations. While this is our first large-scale project within the city of Altoona, we hope that there are many more to come in the near future. This is important to us so that our children and the children of all of Blair County have a safe place that they are proud to call their home. Thank you for your time this evening. If you have any further questions, I would be happy to open discussion.
Thank you.
Tony, would you be willing to elaborate a little bit more on exactly, I'm sure you don't want to give your, the big reveal here, per se, but exactly, maybe, to some degree, what you're looking to do with the property?
So basically, right now, the third floor of the property is, is already got, there was a fire in there that sustained severe damage. The second floor has a lot of water damage. The first floor is just from 1960 at best. So our plan is to basically gut the facility to the studs, new electric, new plumbing, new everything, top to bottom, modern, open, you know, efficient living space, heat, AC, all the modern amenities for, you know, adequate market value housing is what our goal was there.
Excellent. In the course of full disclosure to my peers and the public, Tony, Doreen, and his family are friends of mine, and I've been prospecting the Luthers for years to try to do a project in the city, so I'm excited to see them taking on not only a project, but a pretty big project nonetheless, and I'm confident in his ability and desire to see this project through. So thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Linda, would you read the resolutions, please?
Item A is approving the minutes of the Altoona City Council meeting held Monday, April 14th, 2025. Item B is approving the memorandum of understanding between the city and AFSMI, a local 2188 Union for the Meet and Discuss Group, consisting of first-line supervisors covering the period January 1st, 2025 through December 31st, 2027, and authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item C is appointing city manager Chris McGuire to the Altoona Parking Authority for a term of five years. Said term shall expire the first Monday of January 2030. Item D is being tabled at this time. Item E is awarding the 2025 Community Development Block Grant, Street Reconstruction Project to Grandis Brothers of Holidaysburg in the amount of $182,705.50 payable from CDVG Fiscal Year 2024 funds, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item F is authorizing the submission of an application for a recreation, recreational and educational development grant from the People, Parks, and Community Foundation in the amount of $30,000 for design con, for design costs for the Beach Avenue Playground Project, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item G is authorizing the submission of an application for a Greenways Trails and Recreation Program Grant from the Commonwealth Financing Authority in the amount of $250,000 with a local match of $94,467.20 for installation of playground equipment for the Beach Avenue Playground Project, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Item H is awarding Fire Department Rope Rescue Equipment Replacement to Safe Ware of Landham, Maryland in the amount of $58,469.15 payable from the 2025 capital budget, and further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. Now, item I through U are demo bids. They're all demo bids, they're all going, where the resolutions are all awarding the demo bids to GNR Excavation of Tyrone, and they're all also further authorizing the city manager to execute all documents and the city clerk to attest to same. I is for 516 North 10th Street in the amount of $8,525. J is in the amount, is for 712 3rd Avenue in the amount of $13,250. K is 901 4th Avenue in the amount of $1,950. L is 1, is 1339 North 9th Avenue in the amount of $8,665. M is 2308 3rd Avenue Garage Only in the amount of $6,550. N is 223 3rd Avenue in the amount of $14,150. O is 1408 18th Street in the amount of $10,970. P is 721st Avenue in the amount of $10,940. Q is 1,009 4th Avenue in the amount of $9,850. R is 922 5th Avenue in the amount of $8,450. S is 709 4th Avenue in the amount of $9,850. T is 1521 18th Avenue in the amount of $11,000. And U is an 850, yeah, 850 25th Street in the amount of $11,000. The next group is, they're all repository bids, and they start with V through CC, and they are all repository bids, and I'll name the person and the property and the amount, and they're all further authorizing, authorizing the city manager to execute the tax, taxing district forms. V is approving a repository bid in the amount of $200 to Barbara Stoltz of 1819 Crawford Avenue, Avenue for Property located at 1813 to 1850 Crawford Avenue. W is in the amount of $100 each, submitted by Daniel Albright and Marjorie Titler of 404 7th Avenue for Property located at 400 7th Avenue and 402 7th Avenue. X is in the amount of $50 submitted by Denise and Charles Gummo Jr. of 429 West 15th Street, Tyrone, for Property located at 2409 to 11 Oak Avenue. Y is in the amount of $250 submitted by James and Teresa Bloker of 316 Elm Lane, Dunkinsville, for Property located at 1511 3rd Avenue. Z is in the amount of $200 submitted by Samuel Britt of 814 6th Avenue for Property located at 18, 819 6th Avenue. Double A is in the amount of $700 submitted by Arif Ganggoryer of Waterboro, Maine, for Property located at 1313 17th Avenue. Double B is property, repository bid submitted by Moti Telesa of Coon Rapids, Minnesota, for property, there's, they're all listed each for $50 and located at 1809 to 11 Crawford, 1813 to 15 Crawford, 1808 12th Avenue, 1810 12th Avenue, 1821 to 23 Walton, 1825 Walton, 1478 Washington Avenue, 1480 to 86 Washington Avenue. And double C is by Moti, Moti Telesa of Coon Rapids, Maine, for each of the properties is in the amount of $25, and they are located at 1116 17th Avenue, 1108 17th Avenue, 1110 17th Avenue, 1118 17th Avenue, 1109 17th Avenue, 1120 17th Avenue, 1124 17th Avenue, 1408 17th Avenue, and 1216 17th Avenue. And that is it. Does anything need to be pulled for a separate vote?
Linda, I'd like to pull A, A, B, B, and C, C.
Okay. So we're gonna first call...
I have a question. I think it's on item, item M, as in Mary, when you have a chance. Is that the property, the, only the garage is coming down? 2308 3rd Avenue? A garage is 6,500 bucks? Okay. We can't get together on a weekend, and...
Yeah, and K, I was wondering if K was a typo, because less than $2,000 for the house.
That actually, K might end up being removed. The owner received some assistance from a friend. They're already starting to dismantle the, it was a, an old camper that was moved to the vacant lot that had an illegal accessory building attached to it. It was just kind of a makeshift shanty that somebody else built on the property without her permission. So she's in the process of trying, but if that doesn't work, we wanted to have a plan in place because it's, it's dangerous.
Yeah, I was just wondering, but it was only like $2,000.
Right.
I was going to ask if we approve this tonight, what, I mean, since council's taken action on this, what happens if this doesn't have to happen, or does it?
I think maybe that's a question for our solicitor, in case we don't have to
Yeah.
remove it? I don't know.
You could, you could add a proviso on the demolition bid that, you know, give a time limitation, you know, something to that nature, or if it is taken care of, then GNR would agree that the bid would be moved.
Thank you, councilor.
Is that what, will that require a motion to take that in effect, or?
I don't think it would need a motion. I think that maybe just a, an amendment to the original bid confirming that the owner's request is...
Well, that would take action either part of the contractor, then.
Yeah.
Is that, is that doable at this stage of the game, since they've put their...
I don't want to pull it, no. It's been sitting up there too long.
Okay.
But, I mean, we can certainly contact GNR regarding the contract, I don't know.
The people, the people that are cleaning it up, are they legitimately trying? Okay.
That's why we want to keep it.
I think we're, I think you're right on this one.
It's been out in a couple days, and we may not see it until we...
So put a time limit to it?
Do you have communications with these people?
It's touching, not with the people that are coming in.
Well, we're doing the project with, with overflow this month, and if we can get a roll-off in there, we might be able to get some volunteers to get this out of there. Is that, is that something that would be doable?
We could see, have you seen it?
No, I haven't.
I don't think it would be doable with a dumpster, with a roll-off. It's an actual hammer.
We, we've done this in the past, though, like where we pass them, and GNR works very well with this, like if it would have to be pulled.
If it was backed out, it'd probably go.
Yeah, I mean, it, again, it appeared one day, they started adding to it, kind of throwing things at it, they put a wood burner in it, I mean, it's just weak.
It gets a mask.
It is.
Okay.
But, I mean, we can certainly contact GNR.
That, that option is out there if you think it is workable, because we're doing, we're doing that project the next couple weeks.
Yeah, three more weeks. Three more weeks.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not, I'm not, certainly, I think the project's a priority. I'm concerned about the mechanics and legality, and since we've already bid this and someone's put a price on it and all of that, that's all.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to call for the consent vote. It is not going to include what we tabled, which was item D, and, nor will it include A, A, B, B, or C, C, but it'll include other items. Call for the consent vote.
So, so we are going to leave that one, M in? Okay, all right.
Okay, so this is just for the consent vote. Councilman Beatty?
Yes.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clinage?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Ellis?
Yes.
Councilman Ickes?
Yes.
Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
Mayor Pacifico?
Yes.
The consent vote passes seven to zero, and then on item, on the double A, we, I'll reread that real quick. It's approving a repository bid in the amount of $700 submitted by Arif Ganggoryer of Waterboro, Maine, property located at 1313 17th Avenue. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
No.
Councilwoman Clinage?
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis?
No.
Councilman Ickes?
No.
Councilman Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass.
Yeah.
Then we have item double B, which is approving repository bid submitted by Moti Telesa of Coon Rapids, Minnesota. All the properties listed are in the amount of $50 each, and they're located on Croc, well, 1809 to 11 Crawford Avenue, 1813 to 15 Crawford, 1808 12th Avenue, 1810 12th Avenue, 1821 to 23 Walton, 1825 Walton, 1478 Washington, 1480 to 86 Washington. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
No.
Councilwoman Clinage?
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis?
No.
Councilman Ickes?
No.
Councilman Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass. We have double C, which is approving a repository bid submitted by Moti Telesa of Coon Rapids, Minnesota, for $25, for each property listed in the amount of $25 each. They're all on 17th Avenue, 1116, 1108, 1110, 1118, 1109, 1120, 1124, 1408, and 1216 17th Avenue. Councilman Beatty?
No.
Councilman Butterbaugh?
No.
Councilwoman Clinage?
No.
Vice Mayor Ellis?
No.
Councilman Ickes?
No.
Councilman Kelly?
No.
Mayor Pacifico?
No.
And the vote does not pass.
All right, moving along to city manager updates.
I've got nothing significant to report.
Thank you. Mayor and council discussion items, I'd just like to quickly announce that Prospect Pool will be opening on Saturday, May 31st. I'm sure Bill will be doing a very nice article about the opening. Councilman Kelly?
In, in line with our manager, I have nothing to add to the meeting tonight, mayor. Thank you.
Councilman Ickes?
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to just, I don't want to speak on behalf of council, but I think I want to just give a congratulations to everyone who helped get the deal done with AFSMI, and want to thank AFSMI for their work on agreeing to terms and working with us to execute another collective bargaining agreement. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Butterbaugh?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Ellis?
Yes, I just want to thank Tony for coming in and his investment in the city. I actually visited that property about a year ago, and the view from that third-floor balcony, front porch is just absolutely blows you away, and it's, I'm grateful that you're willing to invest in the city, and I think that's a great property to start with, so thank you very much.
Councilman Beatty?
I'd also like to thank Tony and his wife and children for their blood, sweat, and tears. That's what it'll be till you get done, but, you know, bringing a different perspective. You know, we've been hearing this from different developers, but we haven't had anybody come in and actually put a dollar figure to it, so that's extremely helpful, and it gives a, a different aspect to the narrative. You know, we want Altoona to be successful, we want good landlords, we want good property owners, and, you know, we want to enforce the codes that are here. And with the new comprehensive plan and everything we're doing, I think that fits very well into it, and I wanted, I appreciate your investment. Thank you.
Councilwoman Clinage?
And I will thank Tony and family also. Thank you for coming into the city and starting a project. I look forward to seeing the end result.
Thank you. Questions from the media? Bill?
Thank you. Would anybody care to comment on the, the request by the resident to ban recreational fires? Okay. Would anybody care to comment on Larry Carter's suggestion to restart some form of shade tree commission?
Yeah, Bill, I, I agree with him there. I think that that's something that we've recognized... I think that that's something that we've recognized, I've recognized too, over the last year that, you know, we need to have a shade tree commission again. It's just with everything else that we're working on, finding the time to, you know, revive that is proving a little bit difficult, but yeah, I think it's something that we definitely need to get put back into place.
The the current or well, does the old one still exist in some form, at least on paper, I guess?
I would, yeah, I would think so on paper. The ordinance would still be there. We didn't do anything to.
Okay.
I think it's a Larry makes a good point. You don't want to deforest the city. I know we we have discussions and talks regarding trees and we've had some presentations, but I think we all agree that trees are important. His comment about some of the old Norway maples that are still around, they're great when you're driving by at thirty-five miles an hour and they look nice, but if you drove around after this last windstorm we had, there's a lot of places in the city, I think those trees are dangerous, that they're gonna come down on someone's house or someone's car or a pedestrian. And I'm sure our fire department and our public works department can talk about that, that they're they're out there busy trying to clear roadways and and remove some of those after we have some of those big storms and high winds. And so they look great when you're driving by fast, but some of them are in really bad shape.
What any comments further? I mean, I know there were some comments already, but on Mr. Luther's request to do away with licensing of plumbers and electricians or or the requirement that work in the city, electrical and plumbing work in the city get done by licensed people?
I think it reinforced what we already already kind of knew, you know, that we need to look to have a better system that's more friendly for people that want to have work done on their homes, so.
I'm no construction expert, Bill, by any stretch. I'm sure that's shocking, but seventy-five thousand dollars on a project is significant, right? I don't know how many units or if they're planning for those, you know, that property to be turned into units, but that's a significant cost per unit, for example. You know, that could be directed, you know, perhaps in in additional aesthetics, et cetera. So I think it reinforced the reality of that the cost is is significant, particularly here in the city.
Well, I know there's been a number of discussions, some of them heated about this topic. What what's the current status of council's thinking on it, I guess, and like on any movement that that might happen?
I think right now we have the city manager looking at, you know, possible ways to amend the rules as they stand now. You know, we will still, under the third class code, I think we still are required to have certain requirements and they're certainly supposed to follow the building code. So I think it'll just be a modification as opposed to a gut.
Bill, to me, I think the easiest way that we can do this is to still have the test, still have the master license, but we allow anybody who wants to take the test to take the test. So if you're somebody who's just graduated from the CTC and the HVAC program, you know, and you want to take the tests, the the electrical tests, you should be able to take the electrical test. If you have the knowledge and you feel like you should be able to pass it, why shouldn't we be letting those folks take the test and not not forcing them to, you know, go through the the apprentice and the journeyman stages, you know, and all the hour requirements that are associated with that? So I feel like if somebody has the qual the qualifications and the capabilities to take the test and pass it, they should a hundred percent be able to.
Which would still leave licensing requirements in place for people who are developing, right?
Correct.
Okay.
It can still be done safely, but still follow, you know, the law more economical for the people that want to do these projects.
More economical because of more competition, because more tracing?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah. Tony, do you want to say something?
I have a question on is it because of the Act three that you guys are in because I mean, every single municipality, borough, and city that surrounds you and outside of Blair County and all the way to Allegheny County, which is the city of Pittsburgh, does not require this. So I'm really struggling in why we're even having this discussion. It's a universal construction code. It has to be met from a federal level.
The city of Pittsburgh does have a licensing requirement.
It has something to do with the third-class city code, remember, Mike?
I mean, the third-class city code requires plumbers to be licensed, not electricians, but it does not require examinations. So the licensing can consist of really whatever creatively you want it to be or that council would determine. So if that would be simply a fee, a yearly, an annual fee, if that would be, you know, what we do with general contractors, you know, they pay their yearly fee and they provide us a proof of insurance and there's set limits on the liability amounts. It doesn't require examination. It only requires that plumbers are licensed in some capacity in third-class cities.
Anyone else want to say? Thank you. Can somebody say what the terms are for the Afsmi super the the people who supervise Afsmi workers that that?
We've got a new contract, I guess. We've got a new terms of deal.
Council just approved for me to sign it. We're we're meeting and signing on Wednesday. I'll share the the contract after it's officially ratified.
Okay, thank you. Can somebody explain why the Invisio, I guess, Chris, why the Invisio deal or potential deal was tabled?
We're gonna do a little further examination and see if there's any other alternatives.
You mean for to save money?
Yes.
And then could somebody explain what the I know it it was talked about a couple of months ago, but could somebody explain what the amenities will be on the Beach Avenue Replacement Park Playground, I guess?
Not yet, Bill.
Okay. And and what about the timetable, a timetable for that? Like, when when would that work be done? Or is it it's totally dependent on getting a grant or these two grants, I guess?
It's not totally dependent, but that's where we're we're trying there first to see if we can save money.
And finally, would somebody I guess I sort of know why what the answer would be, but could somebody maybe Rebecca comment on the long list of demolitions that went through the planning commission recently?
Really, this is, again, keeping with the plan that was just adopted by council, the comprehensive plan for all of the rehabilitation efforts that we're going to be, you know, putting in. There's also just probably just as many homes, at least right now, that we need to see raised for these neighborhoods, for the sake of the neighborhoods.
You mean just too foreboding?
Yes. Most of these pro well, I can say, you know, with the exception of maybe the garage and the 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 shanty camper, these properties have long been identified with violations where most of the the owners are deceased. There's no next of kin. Estates have not been opened. You know, all of our efforts have been exhausted. So, I mean, we were kind of given the the green light to to really start identifying the the properties that are bringing down the neighborhoods the most. And we're not done, but this is this is you're you're seeing a bulk of them right now.
Bill, I Kathy and I went for a ride yesterday and most of these houses have stone foundations that have failed. So the the houses are structurally unstable. You know, we had one up by Prospect a couple of years ago. The house actually leaned against the house next door. So we're getting rid of the worst of the worst. And with, you know, if the foundation's no good, there's no use, you're trying to save it. But we we really put a good eye on all of them and they're all they're all needed to be taken down.
I don't want to comment on Ron's idea of a nice Mother's Day gift for his wife, taking her to look at blighted properties that need to be torn down. Some people just want chocolates and dinner maybe, but or a nice gift. But we're 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 behind on some of this, Bill. We're we're behind and we're trying to get caught up and we're trying to be a little more aggressive and we're trying to save neighborhoods, you know, by addressing some of this. And, you know, that's referenced in the comprehensive plan, you know, that this this is actually an investment rather than letting an entire block start to go to rot. Because who wants to fix up their house when they're a door down or two doors down from a house that's the foundation's falling in, so.
Bill, if if you refer back to the comp plan, it does say that if we eradicate blighted properties on a block, it could potentially raise the value of the other houses up to thirty percent. And to me, that's a significant investment that we can we could come to the rescue of the neighbors and just by taking out blight, increase their property values. I think that's a responsibility that we have and we should take seriously.
And Bill, by doing so, you're also closing the gap on what it costs to renovate a house in that neighborhood, you know, like you sit through the our redevelopment authority meetings and you see how much how much that gap exists, you know, between making a a project profitable versus, you know, you're gonna be upside down on it. So if we can raise the val the property values in the neighborhood, you know, it makes those other houses a little bit, it closes the gap a little bit on those, you know, so you don't need as big of a subsidy in that to make it work.
You mean if you do have a renovation in those neighborhoods?
Yeah, yeah, by getting rid of the worst of the worst and kind of raising the rest of the remaining property values a little bit, you can shrink that gap that exists.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is that all?
I can do more if you want.
Nope, nope, you're good.
You know you can.
Do you have any questions? Chill on ten? No? Meeting adjourned.